Peace, Lutheran. Normandale Highlands United Methodist Church, Closet of -- excuse me. Community of the Cross, Bloomington Covenant Church, Veep, Pilgrims Cleaners, Good in the Hood, and Walmart. Together, 1,200-plus coats were donated, not counting the boots, snow pads, hats, and mittens. Soliciting donations is the easy part. The hard part is actually doing something with those donations once you get them. Closet of Hope picked up donations, sorted through, washed and hung all those donated items. This was literally hours and hours and hours of volunteer work. They also organized with Melissa Rabel, 50-plus volunteers to work at the event. We had an astounding response from our community. During and after the event, Closet of Hope outfitted approximately 1,000 Bloomington students and parents with winter wear. My daughter, who volunteered at the event, told me that over and over, parents thanked us for the winter clothing. They were so appreciative because, as one mom put it, "It's so nice that you're doing this for the whole family." Usually, it's just for the kids, and now I have a warm coat too. In addition to clothing, we also provided information on community resources for weekend food, housing, homeless services, domestic violence, and of course, our new health comments at Pond. We even loaded the kids up with a few school supplies. This would not have happened if it wasn't for our friends and partners at Closet of Hope. Dawn, Donna, and her crew are truly amazing. Caring, giving, generous, faithful, and welcoming. The very definition of a friend. Please welcome Dawn Anderson and Donna Moffett from Closet of Hope.
Also, here is my mom, Marguerite Dillon, who's been a part of Bloomington Schools for years and years. She is here, she helps out the closet several days a week as well. So she basically just said everything I was gonna say, all the statistics and everything. But maybe I'll focus a little bit on the volunteers that came through. We had several from our small church that helped. We had students that came because they needed volunteer hours. We had lots of kids helping. They zip-tied boots together, they painted signs, they sorted jackets and hung them on the racks, and they checked zippers and did tons of stuff. So we stand up here, the three of us, but there were so many people helping out as well in those three weeks getting ready. And it was really exciting. Our guests, our volunteers, were so good about helping parents that they had multiple children, they would kind of be their personal shoppers, and they'd say, "Go get a size seven jacket," and they'd run and get it, or "Go get hats and gloves." So that was really fun. They'd hold babies. Donna's like the queen of holding babies, and so it's just, it just helped the parents so much. And at one point, there were two little brothers, a two-year-old and a four-year-old, that were just driving their mom nuts. They had been waiting almost four hours to get in. So I grabbed a shopping cart, and I plopped the boys in there, and a volunteer just pushed them around the gym, and the mom was so happy that she didn't have to deal with them. So that was, that was really great. And one of our volunteers, his only job was to take the big blue Ikea bags from the checkout table out to where our guests were waiting, and that's all he did was run bags back, and he put on six miles that day in four hours. So we wondered why the kid was so sweaty, but so it was a really great experience. And like she said, we had social service people there to talk about employment and food and, or, you know, housing and different things like that. Our guests really took advantage of that and got signed up for Veep. A lot of people hadn't heard of Veep, and I don't know how you haven't heard of Veep, but they hadn't. So that was really great too. But our ministry verse is Leviticus 25:35, "If anyone among you becomes poor and is unable to support himself, help him out so he can continue to live in your community." And we are so glad that we were able to care for people in this way, and especially students. Students should not be without coats and boots, and so we're happy to help the kids of Bloomington. Thank you.
Okay. Need a motion for the proclamation for career and technical education?
Do we need someone to read the?
Someone needs to make a motion for? I'll read it.
Okay. Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the attached proclamation proclaiming February 2018 as Career and Technical Education Month in Bloomington Public Schools. Second?
All right, now I'm going to read the proclamation. It says, "Career and Technical Education Month proclamation. Whereas February 2018 has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education, Minnesota Association of Career and Technical Education and Governor Mark Dayton, and whereas profound economic and technological changes in our society are rapidly reflected in the structure and nature of work, thereby placing new and additional responsibilities on our educational system. And whereas career and technical education provides students with college and career readiness and is the backbone of a strong, well-educated workforce which fosters productivity in business and industry and contributes to America's leadership in the international marketplace. And whereas career and technical education gives students experience in practical applications and technical preparation and provides the integration of technical and academic content, thus improving the quality of their education and affords students leadership opportunities in their schools and in communities. And whereas career and technical education offers individuals lifelong opportunities to learn new skills validated by technical skill assessments and certifications which provide them with expanded career choices. And whereas the ever-increasing cooperative efforts between career and technical educators at the secondary and post-secondary levels along with business and industry partners stimulate the growth and vitality of our local economy and that of the entire nation by preparing graduates for career fields forecast to experience the largest and fastest growth in the next decade. Now therefore, we members of the Bloomington School Board proclaim that February 2018 and the Bloomington Public Schools be observed as Career and Technical Education Month." So all in favor of this proclamation? Please say yes, or say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, thank you.
I'm the Career Development Coordinator for Bloomington Schools, and career/technical education is one of the program areas that I coordinate. We're very happy to be here tonight to accept this proclamation. Just so you all know, and our listening audience knows, career and technical education encompasses the coursework of business education, family and consumer sciences, technology education, work-based learning, and some career advisement. And so all the staff that works in all, in any of those program areas also are in their own way recognized tonight. But I did invite Eric Wrestler, the business education teacher from Jefferson High School, and two of his three students are here tonight to talk about their experiences in business education. So I will turn the mic over to Eric Wrestler.
Good evening. I am Eric Wrestler from Jefferson High School. I just wanted to thank you for this opportunity to come here and talk to you about business education tonight. But it's much more fun to hear from the students. So I'm gonna hand it off to a couple of students to talk about some of the business curriculum, some of the different DECA events that they do, and our brand-new JAG warehouse, which is a school store that they've put together this year, or expanded this year, I guess. Jasmine Jackson and Charlie Mackey will be talking to. Sophie Hadad was gonna be here, but unfortunately, she got sick today and was not able to make it. So I'm gonna pass it over to Charlie first, and then when Charlie's done, Jasmine will talk a little bit too.
Hello. My name is Charlie Mackey. I'm one of two co-presidents with DECA, the other being Jasmine. And DECA is essentially a business club where we try to work on different business scenarios that otherwise students really wouldn't have access to. For example, I personally do an event called a financial consulting event, where I go and this year, I talked with a role-play with a college graduate who had some questions about how he should save for retirement, and that's something I never experienced before. And not only did I get to learn about retirement and learn some content that's very useful, but I also learned some presentation skills, because the judges help you not only kind of learn a little bit about the area and give you feedback on the area, because they're experts in their area, they also give you some things about eye contact and just general presentation skills which are very useful. So every week, we meet after school for about 45 minutes, and this year, we had 26 members who went to the district competition earlier this January, and out of that, 19 of the students went on and placed high enough into their events that they are going on to the state competition, which is just in a few weeks.
No, thank you, Max. I'm sure you have time.
As a side note, if anybody's interested in judging, it's a very good opportunity to meet some students and help some students learn a little bit more about business and what they could be really doing. And overall, we've really been growing the chapter, and students are really getting kind of more interested in business. And personally, for me, I thought business was very kind of scary, and I didn't really know anything about it when I first started, because I had just been in school, but this gave me a really good opportunity to actually get into the business kind of community and see that business really isn't as scary as it, as it kind of seems. And there are all sorts of different events. So other than even financial consulting, there's presentation events for students that can be very useful. And there's also role-play events, or what they're called, where you, you meet with a client, and you get a brief summary, about 10 minutes to prepare, you get to know their situation. For example, last year at the international competition, I did something with tax accounting, where they had some questions about their taxes and how they should deal with it, and I got 10 minutes to prepare for that, and then I gave a 10-minute presentation and consultation. And that really helped me just kind of solidify the ability to meet with somebody and solve a problem, which is what business is really all about. And DECA has really helped me, helped show me exactly how I can be successful in business and really successful in my own life. I'll pass it over to Jasmine.
So another way that students are able to become more career-ready and also be able to learn more about business is through the business education classes that Mr. Wrestler does every day. So some of the classes include video game design, computer skills, business management, marketing and advertising, and just a lot of different areas that are not only in business but also in other careers that people are looking at. So one of the classes that I participated in actually currently is the internship and mentorship, mentorship class, which is basically where you can go to any place that you find a mentor, and you have to internship with them for about 30 hours every trimester. And it's really great just to get hands-on experience outside of the classroom and just to be able to speak with people who are veterans in the profession that you're thinking of and to just have a better clear view of what you want to do in the future. Another thing that we do in that class is go to the Bloomington Future Leaders Conferences. We did one in the fall with diversity and adversity, and I actually went to that one, and it was a great experience to be able to meet with other professionals that I, that weren't just my mentor, and also to hear from motivational speakers. So another thing that I'm gonna be talking about, and I don't know the sign. So we also did this Jefferson School Store this year. We revamped it. The Flex Space, I don't know if you guys know about, has just been recently renovated for Jefferson, so we decided to move our school store closer to that area, and we moved into the old yearbook room. So as you can see, it's more, it's a big area, and we were able to put in both spirit wear and food, which we didn't have originally. We actually just had spirit wear. So this is the first year that we've kind of gotten into that part of school store. So with this food, we had to go with the Smart Snack Guidelines, which is something that every place at Jefferson that sells food has to go by. And so we were still able to buy some great snacks that students like, like popcorn and energy drinks that are low-calorie and low-sugar. So those are great for our store, and we've gotten a lot of sales in those. And with the Smart Snacks and also the store, we can do a project for DECA, which is the School-Based Enterprise Project. So the school store is run by DECA students and also by the president of the school store, which is me. So I'm able to, we were able to talk about the different aspects of the store that we've been working on, like merchandising and security issues that we've been working on for just having a new space. And it was great, because we actually were gold-certified for this year, which means that we're going to the national conference that he talked about. So we're able to go to the state conference and the, and the national conference and present what we've done in the store.
Thank you very much for your time. You can see that we are well-served by the students of Bloomington Schools and by the representation of these two students. So thank you very much. Anybody have any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. I see we do have some students in attendance this evening. So a requirement of our 12th grade government class is to observe a governmental meeting of some sort. Things that they may attend are city council meetings, school board meetings, courtroom proceedings, et cetera. The Social Studies Curriculum Guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political processes and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation. So I'd like to ask the students that are here tonight for their government class to please come to the podium. You need to give your name, the school you attend, and the name of the teacher whose class you're attending for. And then when you're finished with that, if we've been here after an hour, you can, whichever is shorter, or one hour, you can ask for a signature on your agenda. You can go to any of the cabinet members along the wall over here to my left for your signature.
All right. Hi, my name is Sam Heath. I go to Bloomington Jefferson High School down the street, and my teacher is Mr. Storlein.
Hi, I'm Oscar Adaburn. I also go to Jefferson High School down the street, and my teacher is also Mr. Storlein.
Hi, my name is Trevor Gilmer. I also go to Jefferson High School, and I'm in the same class as them with Mr. Storlein.
Hi, my name is Emmanuel Nagaka, and I also attend Jefferson, and my teacher is Mr. Storlein.
My name is Amanda Nash. I attend Jefferson High School, and I'm also in Storlein's class.
I'm Janay Arnoldi. I attend Jefferson, and I'm also in Storlein's class.
My name is Benjamin Chandler. I attend Jefferson High School. I am also in Mr. Storlein's class.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Part A. Oh, one other thing. Is there any, is there anyone else who wishes to address the School Board item that's not on the agenda? All right, Part A.
So I'm going to make a motion to approve Part A.
So moved.
Second. Okay. All in favor of approving our Part A agenda, which includes things like minutes, personal actions, field trips, et cetera, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right.
Madam Chair, I just would like to point out the grant that we received from Firehouse Subs for an additional 15 AED units. My husband was saved by one once, and I think it's great that the more we have around, the better.
Yes. I did ask the question to make sure that, that when we were getting them, that we had training for them, but they said that everybody had been trained and, and everything was good, so.
They don't need training.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to Part B. That brings Dr. Heisit and the kindergarten beat-the-odds report. If you would introduce your guests also.
Yes. With me is Emily Osteren, who was the kindergarten teacher who beat the odds from Indian Mountains Elementary. And her dad is with us, Don Ametson, and Martha Low, who is the videographer. I just found out that Martha graduated from the U in ed psych the same year I did. She has a PhD in educational psychology, as well as doing the videotapes. And I found out that Don went to St. Olaf, as well as his daughter and son, and my two daughters and my wife went to St. Olaf. So it's a small world. So Deb is gonna run the video, and then we'll have a time for discussion.
Reading is the key to unlocking the world for these students. You know, we've seen kids, all of a sudden, they recognize that you string sounds together, and all of a sudden, you've created a word, and you string words together and you've created a sentence when they crack the code about how to read.
The Beat the Odds study is the most exciting work that I do. This time, we looked at kindergarten teachers who beat the odds, and the data led me to Emily.
It's interesting to be singled out. I think it's a huge honor. I think that there's a lot of support that goes along with it. It's definitely not just me that deserves the credit.
Emily's test score growth was six scale-score units higher than the average for kindergarten. This suggests that students are making approximately a half a year extra growth in a year's amount of time. Well, that school that has over four points greater growth than expected is Indian Mountains.
We have seen amazing growth with our kids, and so this staff has to have a large toolkit, and we pay a lot of attention to training our paraprofessionals.
Learning to read is a really complex skill. There's so many things that go into learning to read. Even before students encounter print, they need to have a really solid understanding of phonological awareness and how we can manipulate oral language. So students need to have skills in rhyming, segmenting words into syllables, manipulating the beginnings and endings of words. Then when they encounter print, they have to learn a variety of word recognition strategies. They have to learn rules about how language works, including phonics. And they also have to develop automaticity in their reading so that they can be fluent enough to comprehend what they read.
The research literature shows that early literacy growth is the most important factor in a student's ultimate success in school. So if a student isn't reading well by third grade, their probability of being successful in graduation, in post-secondary, is quite limited.
Many of our students come here with a lot of challenges, and there are many risk factors that affect their education here.
We have a high level of poverty. Our free and reduced lunch numbers fluctuate, but are trending upwards between 70% and 75% of our students.
So the Beat the Odds model isolates the instructional factor, separates it from the demographic factors of students. In our study, we controlled for a number of different risk factors, including students receiving special education service, students receiving English-language learner services, poverty as defined by receiving free or reduced-price lunch. We also compared gender, we controlled for gender, and then racial/ethnic status.
Well, the whole concept of grit has been around for a while. This concept of grit, this concept of, these are our kids, and if not us, then who? And so the staff here, they've embraced that, and they refer to themselves as gritty educators. We're just a group of people who, we come in here, we know there's a job to be done, and we roll up our sleeves and we do it.
Emily puts a lot of value on the role of diagnostic assessment. She assesses students in multiple ways to really hone in on what their needs are as well as their strengths.
Each week, we're doing a quick 10-question progress monitoring assessment on every student to make sure that they're making progress with whatever intervention we're doing. We use all of the progress monitoring data that we gather to make a graph of where each student is at on each reading skill. So as long as they are making progress, we keep them in that intervention. If they're scoring eight out of 10 or higher for three consistent weeks in a row, then we move them on to that next skill. At about six or eight weeks, we all meet together again and reform groups as needed and hopefully move students through to the next skill.
And that's how she runs her classroom. She looks at every student, she analyzes their needs, and then she builds a program. She's a deep thinker about her kids.
The fact that we have beat-the-odds teachers in Bloomington that are producing exceptional rates of growth for students who are typically not predicted to be good readers really sets the stage for future success for these students as they move up through the grades. Wasn't that nice?
Wow.
Thank you.
Emily's gonna talk a little bit about the factors that she sees as important in the success of her students, and then we'll have a chance to ask questions and dialogue a little bit. I would just like to say that it's been a real privilege to sit in her classroom, to see her students learning and to learn from it. We've had all-day kindergarten for three years, so what we did was analyze the data for three consecutive years to see which teachers produced the highest growth, separating out all those demographic factors of students, and then isolating the instructional factor. And Emily actually had the highest value added of any kindergarten teacher in Bloomington. So Emily, take it away.
Thanks. Like I said in the video, I was not, I just do my job the way that I think we all do at my school every day, and so I was kind of surprised to get this email over the summer and very honored, so thank you for having me. I think that in general, there's a really strong collaborative effort to help students succeed at Indian Mountains, and then especially within our kindergarten team. We've been together for a long time and really work well together. Our teachers and support staff are all on the same page with how we help each other and help our students meet the standards using research-based interventions that really match the students' needs. At Indian Mountains, we also have a dedicated block of time for intervention that is by grade level, and then the whole building kind of has a team of staff that goes from grade level to grade level and works on whatever specific skill each student needs. And really use high expectations for all those students so that we're moving them along all of that, all those skills, so that they keep becoming better and better readers. We also really value formative assessment and use that progress monitoring data, like you saw in the video, to really pinpoint the student needs and track their progress toward each standard. And we've developed a really strong process that provides consistency and helps determine whether or not a student is making progress, and use guidelines of what to do if they are or they're not making progress. We use a research-based reading continuum of skills and interventions specific to those skills to make sure that students have a strong base in phonics and phonological awareness. We use short assessments, like I said in the video, to determine student gaps and fill in those gaps when needed using specific interventions. These interventions commonly use direct instruction, and one specific intervention that I think made a huge impact, once we all started using it in kindergarten and in some of the other primary grades, was Orton-Gillingham. I personally have an additional license in special education and learning disabilities, and I saw how successful that that program was for kids who were struggling in reading. And about five years ago, our whole kindergarten team decided to get trained and started using that program of students in large and small group instruction. It's just a really great multisensory direct instruction approach, more so than what we had been typically using. And we started, when we started using that program, our scores really started to skyrocket. So that was really fun to use. Other grade levels, like I said, have now been trained in that and used that during intervention blocks or in... or in different ways in their classrooms as well. Finally, at Indian Mounds, we really teach not just academics, we teach to the whole student. We teach a social-emotional learning curriculum using second step and zones of regulation. And we make sure that students' basic needs are met with free breakfast for all students. We do Sheridan story, we have winter clothing supplies that students can have and things like that. We realize that all students learn differently and we try and determine what methods work best for individuals and use that as much as we possibly can. We have continued contact with parents, updating them on student progress and concerns, and work with those parents to help their students succeed. Like I said, I'm so honored to be recognized individually, but I definitely have a wonderful and supportive team. We have wonderful leadership at Indian Mounds and great colleagues and that really helps to keep student success the priority at our school, so thank you.
Thanks, Emily.
Joan Malin would have loved to be here, but she got the flu over the weekend. Also, Rachel Jens has a swimming meet for one of her children, so she would have liked to be here as well. But you got a chance to see how much they appreciated Emily's instructional leadership. And there is a longer video, so this video is going to be on the board YouTube video, so people can look it again or you can send it to your friends and stuff. There's also going to be a longer video that's really intended for instructional purposes for other teachers to view it. So both of those videos will be loaded to the district website very shortly. So any questions or comments?
Go ahead, Director Burke, sir.
Yes, well, first of all, congratulations. Thank you for coming. And Dad's here tonight. Look at, he's back there with the video.
I know.
So if you don't get a good one, I got one from this angle. Give me your number, I'll send it to you. So I'd like to know, the little bead stick.
Yes, yeah.
Does that work?
It does. It's, you know, I used to do a little different approach to that and I started using it this year and they really, it's worked really well. It's a little calm transition and they all hear it, no matter how much they're talking.
So does it work for 18-year-olds and 16-year-olds?
That I don't know. I only know six-year-olds, so.
I got one of you at home and I'll take anything. Well, thank you so much for coming. Thank you so much for what you do. I really love your attitude. It's a team. You know, you're here to represent your team. You are the, you know, one of the many shining stars in the district, but I appreciate the mention of team.
Thank you.
So thanks for coming and thanks so much for what you do.
Yeah, thank you.
Director Sirm.
Because you mentioned team, what exactly is the team?
Well, it's not only.
How many kindergarten classes are, do you have?
We have three. So there's two other teachers, Laura George and Courtney Tryop. And then we also have a para who's specific to kindergarten that we share named Blanche Hamilton, who's been there many, many years, is very well-trained and knows exactly what to do with kids. It's really awesome to have that resource. And then we also have some other paras, like I said, kind of throughout the days during that intervention block and then also during our reading time. You also saw in the video, the social worker comes in and does a social-emotional small group lesson each week. And then we do a full group lesson as the gen ed teacher as well each week in social-emotional. So that's kind of the core for reading at least that you'll see in the video.
So each kindergarten kind of has the same structure of learning?
Yep.
And you were lucky because you had all the smart kids.
Yep, yep, that's exactly what happened.
In order to succeed, now, this has been all-day kindergarten, right? Do we have any half-day kindergartners at Indian Mounds? I don't even know if we have any in the district.
We have a few in the district, but not at Indian Mounds. And I know you're kidding, but the nice thing about the value-added analysis we do is it controls for prior learning. So you get a chance to identify kids who are very high in making great progress or very low that are making great progress and it's kind of an apples-to-apples comparison.
Because we still know the preschool effect on some of them and you can spot those and work with them as you go along through the whole process, as we're trying to emphasize more and more so that all of our kindergartners can excel that way. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm really excited that you are using the Orton Gillingham because there was somebody whose door I knocked on in the campaign and she spent quite a bit of time telling me how we needed to put Orton Gillingham into our school district. And I'm going to go back to knock on her door and tell her what's happening and what you are doing. I'm very encouraged by that because phonics is the basis for really learning how to read. And there had been a season where that was taken away in education. It was questionable when I was going through my training as a teacher. And so to know that it has come back around full circle and you are using it is just very, very encouraging. I'm wondering, Dr. Heistad, with the fact that you have observed the great success of what she is accomplishing and her team, if that is something that you will recommend to do in some of our other schools with similar populations?
Thank you, Director Beebe. We do have this instructional video and Rachel Jens, who's the instructional lead for elementary, is going to use that video in her training to show how the small groups are organized, to be able to talk about the, what they call formative assessment, measuring progress, day-to-day, week-to-week, to hit some standard. And so I do think it will be replicated in other places and that other teachers can learn from what's going on at Indian Mounds and specifically in Emily's classroom. So thank you for that question.
Congratulations, Emily. I'm so proud of you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just had one more that I wanted to recognize Martha in the back as the videographer and she's been so helpful with BECTV over the years and everything else like that. So she was available or you hired her to do this because she's so good.
Yes, this is the second time we've done this together and we've got plans for another one. As part of the Innovation Zone application we put into the state, we put in that we wanted to find the EL students that are making the greatest growth and then find out how the cooperative teaching is working. Because usually it's an English Language Learner teacher and a regular teacher working together. And so we're going to try to capture that in the next couple of years when we've got the Innovation Zone, hopefully, so. Yes, thank you, Martha.
Thank you, Martha.
Yeah, she's tremendous to work with.
Any other questions? I just wanted to say thank you so much for being here. Thank you for the work you're doing and congratulations. And I'm really glad since the snowstorm, we didn't get to have you here. We had to cancel that meeting, so I'm glad that we could schedule it for this meeting and finally get you here.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, moving on to bid awards for mechanical and HVAC improvements at Ridgefield Elementary School.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Director Berger.
We resolve that the School Board of Independent School District 271 accepts the following 18 bids for mechanical and HVAC improvements at Ridgefield Elementary School.
Thank you.
Mr. Rod Siskovich.
Chair Saigoff, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. This is the, one of our major projects this summer as part of our alt facility funding that the board has approved in the annual levy. These bids were presented a couple of weeks ago. Both our architect and also our construction managing company reviewed the bids, talked to the low bidders to make sure that they were good bids and the district is recommending approval of these.
Questions? Director Sirm.
So Director Siskovich, is this one of the same things that like Poplar Bridge had done? So there's a significant amount of work?
Correct. This is all the, a lot of the work that's being done is a lot of the mechanical, the piping, electrical, updating it. But then also windows and some of the painting and other areas, but it's more of the mechanical end of things.
All of the bids that came in, obviously we have specs that are generated by the engineering or architect firm or whatever it is. So all of the bids that came in, this is all set to go. There's no confusion or extra bidding needed.
Correct.
Thank you.
Director Burke.
Just a quick one for you, Rod. Thanks for coming. Just want to make sure that we're confident in the completion date happening before everyone gets back into school.
Yes, the project, the plan is that we will have occupancy for when the teachers come back.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Moving on to joint purchasing agreement with Northeast Metro District 916. You're up again, Rod.
Chair.
Yes.
We resolve the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves a joint purchasing agreement allowing ISD 271 to combine purchasing power with other districts to secure favorable terms and conditions in the purchase of equipment, materials, services, and supplies.
Second.
This is an agreement that we've brought to the board at other times from different school districts. What it is, is school districts or collaboratives will go out and negotiate with larger companies on pricing. Instead of us having to go back and go through the process ourselves, we do a joint powers with that school district or with that collaborative to allow us to be able to use those same prices.
Questions? See none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No votes? Okay, moving on to naming the auditor. Someone like to read that motion?
Chair. We resolve the School Board of Independent School District 271 renew Bergen KDV Limited to perform a general financial audit conforming to state and federal guidelines. The renewal is for five years, starting in 2018, 2019. And the fee will be $37,720 for 2018, 2019 with a 1.4% increase per year through 2022, 23.
Second.
This brought to the board early. We're still under contract with the audit firm. We just wanted to make sure that as we get past July 1 and we start dealing with items for the next year, we wanted to get this upfront rather than waiting till that point in time.
Director Sirm.
And Rod, just other than the typical audit, this firm seems to have been very open to questions that we have during the course of the year for some kind of consultation or interpretation, whatever, right?
Yes, a lot of follow-up questions or different things with, I think even recently of some of the new healthcare laws and the rest, we've asked them to give us guidance on direction. They have to be very careful not to make management decisions or suggest management decisions because they're auditing our books.
Thank you.
Director Bennett.
Yeah, just curiosity, how many different auditing firms are there available in the state that we could choose from? Or from which we could choose?
I think that the, I think there's about three or four larger ones that do majority of the school districts.
Okay, were, any consideration made to changing the auditor? Or were we happy with our current auditor and we wanted to keep them or how did that whole process work?
Before, we renewed the last time, we went and went out for bid with a lot of auditors and they, a reasonable increase based on what costs they've had before. Also too is there is a cost of shifting auditors, just the time of redoing the, how they want to do it and how them getting used to us. So we thought at this point in time, this would be the best opportunity to lock in for four years with them at a minimal increase.
Yeah, they've done a great job. I was just wondering what else there is out there. And the 1.4 increase per year, how did that come about? Was that like negotiated or is that just?
It was negotiated.
Okay, alright. That's enough. That was just some number you threw out there?
No, if you remember, the last time, they were flat for, I think, four or five years. And this is, you know, part of it is to kind of get back in line with what the normal increase would be.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, all in favor of this signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to school calendar, Mr. Melby, and someone like to read the resolution as Mr. Melby's coming up?
I can read it. We resolve that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the calendar for the 2018-2019 school year.
Second. Chair Saigoff, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board, thanks for the opportunity to bring the next school year calendar to you this evening. I can tell you that the calendar for 2018-19 school year was developed by the Calendar Committee and I'm going to thank all of them like an Oscar caliber thanking speech at the end of this update for you because it took a lot of help. This year's calendar allows for elementary assessment time at the beginning of the year, so that's a change for us. That means that Wednesday of August workshop week and the traditional first day of school for elementary students will actually be elementary assessment days. To ensure that adequate professional development for all staff happens, we'll be moving to four early release days that'll be conducted throughout the year. We decided to go with early release rather than late starts so we could make sure that all students had breakfast and lunch opportunities those days. The high schools this year already were doing some early releases, so we're working kind of with that schedule and piggybacking with them moving forward, at least for the next year. Been in discussions with Kid Safari to develop plans to support families who need extra childcare assistance during those days. And feedback was solicited from administration, parents, teachers, and the development of this calendar. I do want to formally thank the Calendar Committee and by name. Patty Arteal serves on there from Oak Grove Middle. She's a QCOM coach now, actually. Gary Bergerson from Transportation, Chinda Gregor from Office of Educational Equity, Jeremy Coons, principal at Olson Middle, Bridget Mahalik, who's with Kennedy High School, Don Stagoff, Board Chair Stagoff, Jenny Thorp-Blossman with the QCOM Mentor Program, and Charlotte Westby, served as the parent rep and she serves on the PTSA. Also want to give a Dick Bergstrom-like shout-out to some other folks too. Wendy Marcek and the BFT Executive Council, lots of conversations with Wendy and others about this. The PTSA Council for welcoming us last year to have some of this discussion. Pathways Advisory Committee had some input, parents had some input into this decision-making. And the Superintendent's Advisory Committee also had lots of discussion about this. So I just want to publicly thank all those folks. It's a little bit of a different calendar for Bloomington and so it took a lot of thinking and a lot of consulting, so thanks to everybody.
Are there any questions? Alright, well, thank you for your work on it. Oh, Mr. Bennett.
And since there is some change to this with the, especially for elementary students and families, I think that whenever there's change, there's going to be some uncertainty and some people are going to be upset by the change. So I was wondering if you could just kind of discuss a little bit about why we feel the need to have assessment days instead of those instructional days?
The work that we've been doing the last few years with units of study at the elementary level requires us to do a reading assessment with all students to determine levels and get them into the right groups. And we've been tackling that for the last couple of years during the first month and a half to two months of school. They're intense, they're not real long, but they're intense one-to-one kind of assessments that teachers do with students. And we were using some sub-time to accomplish that. It just was, it was taking, and a lot of people who are smarter than mine's opinion, a little too long to get those assessments completed and get the instruction fully going. So in my humble opinion, moving to this model, which a number of other districts already are doing, will, I call it supercharge instruction for reading at the elementary level and that's what excites me about the proposed calendar.
Yeah, as a teacher, I know that we spend a lot of time in the fall trying to find our reading levels of students and we waste a lot of instructional time, so it is good to have these assessment days. And I'm wondering what the first day of school, it's what, that Wednesday, so that Tuesday when you're doing assessments, what's that going to look? look like in the elementary school buildings?
We'll be working with families to schedule those assessments and get folks in there. When kids are getting assessed, the parents and guardians who are able to bring them in, we'll be working with school staff to kind of do almost orientation kind of things that might typically be covered at an open house evening or something like that. We can make sure folks are all set up for the hub. We can make sure that all their forms and paperwork that we need to get turned in are turned in. It's another opportunity for us to directly interact with those folks right before school starts, which I think is a positive thing as well. Yeah.
So then, I know currently, we have the first day of school in elementary school. There's no kindergartners and they do like an orientation and then the next day is kindergarten. So is that gonna, so all K through 5 will start on that Wednesday or kindergarten will be the next day?
Everybody will be in school on Wednesday.
Okay. And on that Wednesday, for those parents that aren't able to bring their children for assessment, how is that going to work? I mean, is there going to be no Kid Safari available for those parents? They could bring their kids to Kid Safari and they can get assessed while they're there? Or what does that going to look like?
For folks who aren't able to make it to the two days of scheduled assessment time, we'll work with those. I am hopeful it'll be a small number of students to get those assessments done during, you know, regular back-to-school time, I guess. And then like I said, working with Alex Locke and the folks at Safari to figure out how to support families who need extra support with their childcare.
There'll be Kid Safari throughout the day, that first day of assessment?
We're working out details, and so I don't want to overpromise anything, but that's in the, in the realm of possibility, yes.
Okay. And then another question, I noticed when looking at the early release days, that there, there's two of them together, two different times, and they're right before break. I don't know if you can give me what the thinking behind that was?
Part of it is driven by logistics of transportation and our tiered system and making sure that we can get everybody picked up and dropped off at the correct time, as well as supporting all our other programs that have transportation needs, like special education programs in particular. I think this is our first year doing this, and we're going to see how that works and how that feels and looks for people, and then make some determinations moving forward about what that looks like in future years. So we'll see how that goes. I can see some benefit to the back-to-back just for the professional development aspect of it in terms of working with staff and having things fresh in their brain from one day to the next day, if you will. But we're going to, we're going to monitor that, talk to people, and use what we learn to make future decisions.
Okay. I think what I like about this, I know this kind of came out of the whole teacher advisory committee and the district working together. So it's, it's kind of a negotiation going back and forth and to where we got to this, this calendar, which is the whole point of that committee. So it's, it's good to see that that committee's working and that you guys can work together and come with a compromise. Not exactly what both sides initially wanted, but through the art of compromise, we got something that you guys both agree with, which I think is great. So I want to commend both you guys on the district and the teacher advisory committee on that. I don't think that's it. Anyone else? Top to top?
Anyone else have questions?
Tom took all of my questions, so.
Yeah, mine too. I waited, but no one raised their hand as he was going to move on.
All right. Director Beebe?
I'm actually glad to see the elementary assessment days because as a teacher, it's stressful to try to do that during the regular class days. And so I think this actually will alleviate some stress on teachers and encourage them to know that they have a starting point with each student. So, good progress.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm excited to, to roll out the calendar and see how we do.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you for your work on this, and thank you to all of the groups that also contributed to it. I think it's great to try something new. Hopefully, you know, we can, it will work out and we can continue it in the future. So all in favor of approving the 2018-2019 calendar, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A new calendar. All right, moving on to policy review. And that will bring up Mary Burrows. And would someone like to read the first one?
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 has reviewed Policy 410, Family and Medical Leave, and no changes will be made to current policy.
Second? Any questions, since there's no changes? Go ahead, Mary.
Okay, Chair Steigoff, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the School Board. This is our annual review of these policies and bringing two forward, neither of which I'm recommending changes to. This first policy, as I said, it has to be reviewed annually, provides family and medical leave to district employees in accordance with the Family Medical Leave Act. It is a mandatory policy by the Minnesota School Boards Association, and we use their model for this policy. And they haven't updated it, so I'm saying keep it the same and recommending that.
Questions? Right, all in favor of approving Policy 410, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, moving on to the next one.
Okay, again, this is another mandatory policy by the Minnesota School Boards Association. We are using the model language for most of it. And again, they have made no changes to their model. So again, I'm suggesting no changes to ours at this time.
Madam Chair, can I read the resolution?
Please.
We resolve that the School Board of Independent School District 271 has reviewed Policy 413, Harassment and Violence, and no changes will be made to the current policy.
Second?
Any questions?
Even if we wanted to make changes, there's not much we could make because a lot of it's mandated by law. Is that correct?
A lot of it is mandated by law in both of the policies, yeah.
Yeah, just want to make sure people understand that sometimes even when we're on the policy committee, we'd like to change policies, we, we can't because we're, have other government entities that are telling us what we can and can't do. So some things are out of our control.
Yep.
Okay. All in favor of approving Policy 413, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mary. All right, moving on to board member reports. Does anybody would like to go first?
I attended the first meeting of my tenure, the District Diversity Committee meeting. And I also attended the Bloomington United Youth Volunteer Recognition Awards that evening, that same evening. And I just want to note the people that were recognized. The BECTV Student Techs were recognized. Verge Senna Scale and Dawn Anderson, who was here from Closet of Hope. Verge is a longtime Bloomington volunteer for all youth activities, and Dawn for the Closet of Hope. Transfiguration Lutheran Church was recognized. The Bloomington Police Department Multicultural Committee, I'm sure it's not a committee, but they were recognized. And Sue Martel of Our Own Volunteer Connection was recognized for her 25 years of service to placing volunteers in, in our schools. So that's my report.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just want to say quickly that after this meeting, the Bloomington School Board Student Advisory Committee will be meeting with myself and Nellie and Beth just to plan our next meeting. Not many students, but I just wanted to say an open meeting. That's about it.
Okay.
I'm sure.
Director Burks, sir.
I did want to mention that there was a young man in the, in the front row tonight who was here getting his, working on an Eagle badge. He's a 13-year-old. He had all but two. And so he had just left, so he'll see this, I'm sure. He'll rush home and watch it. Had the opportunity to attend Signing Day at Kennedy High School. And of all the ones that I've gone to at Kennedy and Jefferson, I think this one was the largest number of students. There were 11 or 12 kids. So congratulations to all of those students. Congratulations to all of their parents, all of their mentors, all the people that, that shaped and guided their lives to that point. You know, I know those, those students wouldn't say that they did it all themselves. So it was, it's really nice to see, they're going to, you name the schools, and they're going to it. So it's, it's really quite impressive to see what those students had, had accomplished. Also had the opportunity to serve lunch over at Normandale Hills. I had served there for a number of years, a long time ago when our kids were little. And, and I'm still on the, hey, we need your help email. So I was able to get over there. And, and I continue to be impressed with the, the kitchen staff at how well they run the kitchens. And this is, this is district-wide. They know at the, at this point of the year, they know all the students, they know all their names, they know all their quirks. So if somebody's extra fidgety, you know, they allow for the extra fidgety. Every now and then, there's a student that comes through with a milk. And, and the, the kitchen staff will say, you know, honey, remember you can't drink milk. We have your juice over here for you, or we have your water over here for you. "Oh, that's right, though. Thank you," you know, because they have whatever food allergy. And it's just a, it's a treat to see how well these, these kitchen staffs handle their students. And plus, it was a lot of fun serving. I had some kind of vegetable that the kids didn't want. And, and it's my goal to talk them into taking at least one vegetable on their tray. And towards the end of the day, they, they were taking at least one vegetable. So I was successful. Also had the opportunities to spend the, spend the day at the Holiday Inn on 35 and 94th. This was the Winter Future Leaders. Debbie Belfried, who was just here earlier, had mentioned it. This is co-sponsored by Bloomington Public Schools and the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. We get the winter meeting as well as the fall conference. There are a number of people from local businesses that give their time. It's 7:30 for the adults until 1:00. The kids come a little later, 8:15. But it's three-quarters of the day. They give their day. We sit at the tables. We talk to juniors and seniors. There are certain scenarios that we walk, that we run through with them. The, the adults at the tables stay, but the students change. In the winter, they change tables three times. So we get to meet, you know, 20, up to 24 different new students and go over these different scenarios with them. And this is the beginning of the seventh year that I've been able to do this. And it's, it's just a fantastic program. So kudos to all the adults that are involved in making this happen. And I always ask the question when, when I get there. I'll ask the students, where are you from? What school? What grade? And how did you, how did you learn about this? And there's always one that'll raise their hand and say, well, it was a, it was a field trip and I didn't have to be in school. You know, and they're, they're honest with it. And I'll look around the table and I'll say, I guarantee that when you're done today, you'll have learned something that you didn't know, and it will have made today worth coming. So maybe you missed school, but you, you didn't miss being educated. So that program is a, it's, it's just a wonderful program. And I'm, I'm really, really thankful that I've been able to attend and thankful to our bus drivers for getting the school, the kids picked up on time, getting them there safe, getting them returned back to school, all the adult leaders, and all of the adults from our business community around Bloomington. And I'll, I'll end my report there. Thank you.
Anyone else? Director Beebe?
I've been involved in lots of meetings and training at the Minnesota School Board Association. And I was actually just down there last Wednesday, taking a class on superintendent's evaluation, since I'm on that committee. And I wanted to just really be informed as much as I can. And have found them to be very supportive, very encouraging. And sometimes there's so much coming at me, it's hard to sort it out. But at least I'm having an enjoyable time learning. Last Friday, I was able to be a part of the Westwood Elementary School Family Fun Night. And they have a really active PTA there. And so once a month, they have a family night event. And they were playing table games, and I was able to get to know some of the kids and some of the parents and the PTA members. And just really pleased. They, I asked them, you know, about their school and what they appreciate about their school. And they, they said they really appreciate the sense of community. And I know that that's one of the goals that Hugh Roberts, the principal, has there. And so that message is getting through and it's being displayed and it's being talked about. So that's encouraging. I plan to do more with the school in, in March because we have an awful lot this month and just appreciate getting to know more people. I also have been trying to recruit people for the Kennedy Career Day on the 20th. They sent out an email, and so I've been talking to different people in areas that they're looking for volunteers. And some have been able to help. So I hope that goes very well for them.
All right. Anyone else care to ask or anything?
I just have a couple items. I was able to attend the Kindergarten Information Night at Normandale Hills and the PTA meeting at Normandale Hills. And the conversation at the PTA meeting, I would say, was rather robust around the Smart Snack Guidelines. That was the majority of that meeting. I also attended the Valley View Middle School Open House for incoming sixth graders. And I attended the Early Learning Services Parent Advisory. And that meeting was, someone came and gave an overview of all the Early Learning Services programs. The Bloomington Avacy Council also met since our last meeting and look for them. We will be bringing some new members. We're, we're looking for a couple new members, so we will be bringing some of them to the board for approval. Last, I just wanted to tell you all that at the MSBA training that we, the leadership several weeks ago, since we missed a board meeting, the closing speaker was a man named Manny Scott. I bought his book. I think Director Beebe bought several of his books. And we just wanted you, you know, to know that if you wanted to borrow a book. But he was a wonderful speaker. And if anybody has a chance to hear him, he was fantastic. If you saw the movie Freedom Writers, he was one of the students that that movie is based on. Talk about a Beat the Odds. You know, I don't think they use that terminology, but I think that was definitely a Beat the Odds teacher, if, if you watched any of that or listened to him talk about her or in his book. So I just wanted to point that out, that he's probably one of the best speakers I've heard in the last 20 years. So hopefully, we can hear him again in our state. So, thank you. Okay, moving on to the Superintendent, Mr. Fujitaki.
Thank you. I have three motions to request from the board. First would be to establish a School Board Retreat for tomorrow night, February 13th at 6:00 PM at Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. And the purpose is to discuss strategic planning. We have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second? All in favor of the retreat tomorrow night signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you.
Thank you. We need a motion to establish a joint city council School Board meeting for February 28th. That's a Wednesday. And we're the host, so it's going to be held in this room at 7:00 PM on February 28th. We have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
And just for everyone's information, this is probably going to be the sixth meeting that we've had in a little over two years. And we're one of very few school districts that have joint meetings with their city council.
Okay, all in favor of establishing a joint meeting with a city council on February 28th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last motion would be to cancel the February 26th School Board meeting because it's during spring break. March 26th, I'm sorry.
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
Okay, did you make the motion?
I did, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Second?
All right. So to make sure I have this right, it is the March 26th? Is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
So all in favor of canceling the March 26th School Board meeting because it is on spring break, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The Toro Company is a Fortune 1000 company. We're very fortunate to have it in our community, that company. They've been very good partner, especially with Olson Middle School. Today, I met with executives at Toro to talk about business partnerships for the district. I'm encouraged by the conversations. We're going to have follow-up conversations with the Toro Company. Next is on February 1st, Rashad Jennings is a New York Giants running back, and he has a foundation. And he started the Reading Challenge Program. And he's had this challenge program in other states, and he chose Indian Mounds to be the first Minnesota school to have this challenge. And it was event on February 1st. And it was event on February 1st, and I've been to a lot of school events, and this was one of the best. He did an outstanding job, and so did the students. They exceeded their goal of reading. All the students participated, all of them read, and they exceeded their goal by over 1,000 books. So congratulations to them, and thank you for Rashad Jennings and his, all the gifts he gave to the school.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the board? All right, seeing none, meeting is adjourned.